I'd like to ask the mayor to come in and present some citations.
Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. And I want to thank the council for indulging me. Take some time here. As you know, we have the state champions here in our, in our audience. And I wanted to recognize their tremendous season they had this past year. The B-Team cheerleaders won the national title. Is that correct? Right? The national title? So I know a thing or two of that. I've been involved in that myself with my daughter many years ago. And I know how hard you all worked to get to that place. With the commitment involved, it's not easy. It's getting up early on weekends. It's being, you know, practicing all, all year long in the summer, being in the gym. So we're very proud of you. I want to thank your coaches also for their time they put into this. They're all volunteers, as you know. So time to take away from their family to help you. And, and the league itself, and Brian's here, the president, I want to thank Brian for his commitment to the organization for, for many years. So I'm going to call you up one by one, but just want to let you know that we here in the city of Everett, your mayor and your members of your city council really appreciate what you did. And you really put Everett on, you know, you gave us some great attention. That's what we're always striving for is positive attention. And that's what you did. So we're very proud of you. So congratulations to you, to you, to you all. So a round of applause for all of you kids. So I'm going to read one citation, and then what I'll do is invite your coaches up first. How will we do that? We'll start with your coaches. We usually do the reverse. I'm going to start with the president himself. Get him up here. Last one. Yeah. So all these citations are the same. This is, be it known to all, there's honor mayor, Mayor Kyle Dean Maria Jr. offer my most serious congratulations to President Brian Diamond. In recognition of your dedication, hard work, and resulting... Come on, Bri. So the assistant chair coordinator, Diane Gru. Diane? The chair coordinator, Elena Hickey. The assistant coach, Mary Ann Charloni. Mary Ann here? No, she's not here. Is she, is she in Florida still? She is. She loves that place. Head coach, Nicole Bonapine. And that, I'm sure, is the woman who worked the hardest for this team as the head coach. She has to bear the responsibility and the, and the pressures. So congratulations, Nicole, on your job well done. Assistant coach, yes. Assistant coach, Jamie Gru. And it doesn't work good without assistant coaches. So thank you to you assistant coaches. And assistant coach, Tiara Schell-Moise. Not here? Assistant coach, Jillian Avalar. That's it for the coaches. All right. So I'm going to, I have the first one here. I'm going to read it again, okay? So again, be it known to all, there's honor mayor, Mayor Kyle Dean Maria offer my most sincerest congratulations to Riley Avalar. Riley? And I'm going to read the rest of it. In recognition of your dedication, hard work, and resulting in your being the junior varsity cheer division 2017 national champion. Congratulations. Caroline Cardoza-Betty?
Next is Bianca De Lima. Next is Natalie De Oliveira. Next up, Gabriella Frenney. Next up, Michaela Frenney. Next up, Jennely Gonzalez Garcia. Ava Goodwin. Ella Hickey Schultz. Doing the best I can here. Cara Messiah. Olivia McCann. And Tiffany Silva. Yeah, they're coming up.
Well, why don't we have, yeah, Andrew, why don't you organize? Can we get the city council members to come up with us? Have a nice round of applause for the 2017 national champions.
Yeah, we'll get the girls in the middle? Oh, the girls, the girls in the front? What do you think? Oh, no, have them go back. Yep. Turn it sideways. It's not working. Kind of in front of it. Do we have anybody else? We need you guys.
...
Mr. President.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Yes.
Why don't we have, yeah, Andrew, why don't you organize? Can we get the city council members to come up with us? Having a nice round of applause for the 2017 national champions.
Yeah, you two.
Just have me in the picture.
Aye.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
That all faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a police officer for the city of Everett.
According to the best of my abilities.
And understanding.
Agreeably to the rules.
Regulations.
Laws.
So help me God.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll bear true faith and allegiance.
To the commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And I'll support the laws.
And constitution of the commonwealth.
So help me God.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll be a true faith and allegiance.
To the commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And I'll support the laws.
And constitution of the commonwealth.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Mr. President.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor McInnes.
Here.
Counselor Simonelli.
President Napolitano.
11, uh, 10 members present.
Please stand and join us in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Clerk will read the first item on the agenda. Open public participation. We have a motion to open public participation, seconded, all in favor? Opposed? Do we have anybody on the list?
There was no list, but you can, if you'd like to, let me check the, uh...
Just gonna ask once, anybody like to come up and speak on any particular items? Seeing as none. Motion to close public participation, all in favor? So move.
Item number one is an order offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano as president. Subject to confirmation by the Honorable City Council, hereby appoint Leana Batista and Janelle Grasso as police officers in the City of Everett Police Department.
Second motion. Motion favorable action, seconded. Clerk will read the roll.
Counselor Capone. Counselor Delasola. Counselor DeFlorio. Counselor DePiero. Counselor Hanlon. Counselor McInnes. Counselor McLaughlin. Counselor Simonelli. And President Napolitano. 10 ayes, zero nays, Mr. President.
You've passed the order.
Aye.
Aye, Janelle Grasso.
Do solemnly swear that all faithfully and impartially. Discharge and perform. All the duties incumbent upon me. As a police officer for the City of Everett. According to the best of my abilities. And understanding. Agreeably to the rules. Regulations. Laws. Of the City of Everett. So help me God. Aye. Do solemnly swear that I'll bear true faith and allegiance. To the commonwealth of Massachusetts. And I'll support the laws. And constitution of the commonwealth. So help me God. Aye. Do solemnly swear that I'll bear true faith and allegiance. To the United States of America. And I'll support the constitution. Of the United States. So help me God. Congratulations.
Mr. President, can we call for a five-minute recess and invite the family forward?
Call a short recess for photos.
I'm here. Do you have it going, or do we need calling?
Okay, we're called back in session.
Mr. Chairman, could we please suspend the rules and take item number 10?
Second motion. If I could, we have, we actually have one person on the signing sheet, so I would ask if you could pull that back and, uh, so we could take item number four, recommend taking item number 14.
Okay.
Second. The motion for item number 14 is seconded, all in favor? Opposed? Clerk will read the item.
Item number 14 is an ordinance offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano as president. An ordinance amending the fire permit fee schedule, section 18-15 permit fee schedule of the revised ordinances of the City of Everett.
Chairman. Do we know what the fee permit schedule is? Or just being updated? Not particularly, just want to know what it is, do we know it? Oh, I'll have them come up then, please.
Motion to have the chief come before us.
Thank you. Anthony Colley, Fire Chief, good evening, everybody. Chief, just reading this, I don't know what the fee schedule is and how does it differ from the one that we have now, like, by percentages, you know?
I apologize, I should have brought a copy up, Ways and Means we had a copy with us, I don't know if anybody has one available now. Roughly, we're raising our fees, most fees...
Clerk has a copy of the fees, he's gonna copy it and make sure everybody has a copy of it.
These fees haven't really been adjusted in, as far as we look back, probably plus 20 years. So, most of our fees for burning and welding were originally $20, we're going to, I believe, $50 on those, and that's probably the most common one you'll see. For what we call a 26F inspection, which that's what you see my members doing for real estate inspections, those are dictated by the state, so you won't see those touched. Permit reviews will be adjusted as well, you'll see the biggest increases on the permits that involve my manpower. So if somebody comes in and just pulls a permit, we went pretty light on those adjustments, but any time that I have to dedicate somebody that an inspection is involved with a permit, we had to increase that, just to kind of offset the costs of personnel.
Excuse the chief. Okay, clerk has the list there.
If you'd like me to read the list, it's up to you.
Just send us a copy.
Just so you know, the, I worked with the chief and deputy de Toli on this, and all the fees are in line with other cities or less, so we did not go above and, on any other local municipality, on any of the fees, he kept it in line or less than any other of the surrounding cities, just so you know.
Counselor Matusky.
Thank you, Mr. President, but the city clerk has indicated that he is looking into increasing the fees for the storage tanks of fuel in the city that haven't been touched in quite some time, and you're looking into the...
Yeah, just so you know, that's separate from the Fire Department, they do inspect it, but that is a license solely under the city clerk by state law.
But we did discuss that, Mr. President, at the Ways and Means Committee, and that is forthcoming at some future date.
In the coming months, yes.
Good, I'm looking forward to that, thank you.
We have a motion to, excuse, customary thanks, second.
B favorable action.
Second. Motion favorable action, second. Clerk will read the roll.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Delasola?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor DePero?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor Marchesi?
Yes.
Counselor Matusky?
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Seminelli?
Yes.
President Napolitano?
Yes.
You have 10 yeas, 0 nays, you have enrolled. There's no one on the sign-in sheet, but we do have a licensee, and we do have two of the department heads that I know that are on the agenda, three department heads, sorry.
Suspend the rule, please take item number 10.
Will motion take item number 10, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nice have it. Clerk will read item 10.
Item number 10 is a committee report on community and business development, a petition from the Everett Frame and Collision to operate a new repair shop mechanical and body license located at 86 East Elm Street.
Favorable action on the order with the restrictions of no spray booth and the hours of operations on Mondays through Saturdays, 8 to 6.
On the motion, is this been to committee already?
Yes, it was on the sixth of-
Okay.
And all papers are in order.
Okay, so we have a motion, favorable action as amended?
As amended, yes.
In a second. Clerk will read the roll.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Delasola?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor DePero?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor Marchesi?
Yes.
Counselor Matusky?
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Seminelli?
Yes.
And President Napolitano?
Yes.
10 yeas, 0 nays, Mr. President.
Mr. Clerk, I'm sorry, on the passage, can you, does the petition understand that he has to wait so many hours?
Uh, yes, just so you know, you have to wait till Wednesday at noon or later to come and pick up the licenses by ordinance, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Why don't we bring out department heads, there are pieces there.
Yes, so you'd, the next one-
Make a motion that we take item number 11 off of the calendar, please.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Nice have it. Clerk will read the item.
Item number 11 is an order offered by Councilor Peter A. Napolitano as President to transfer the total amount of $621,500 from the CIP stabilization fund to the following account below to fund the capital project request for the Sacramento Park renovation project. Sacramento Park renovation project, $621,500, the current balance in the capital stabilization fund is $2,071,865. And just on this, it's actually supposed to read 457.5, I'll give you the exact number, because some, it was already, half of, a part of it was already passed, and I'll give you the exact number so you can amend it. Tony Sousa is here to speak on that.
Make a motion, bring Mr. Sousa before us.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nice have it. Sousa, if you- Please state your name and title for the record.
Good evening, Tony Sousa, Director of Planning Development.
Counselor-
Hi, Sousa, how are you? Sousa, prior to us coming up here, we were talking about, I believe, most of this money, you know, for the capital project request for Sacramento Park, is this for the building itself, the bathroom, and is this the amount, 621,000 for that building, or is that for the total?
If I may, so originally, that was for the total, which included the building.
I thought we already gave that?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Correct.
So you're looking for a different, uh, total tonight, or this, we haven't transferred that yet?
If I could, Councilman, we split the order at two meetings ago.
Yep.
So we passed a portion of it, now we're-
But we haven't allocated the funds for that, we just, right?
The 154 was allocated.
Okay, so the 621 would be the total, including-
It's 467,500 is what your, what the order should read, 467.5. Total order is 621, but you allocated 154, you already passed that, it just went favorable.
And this is, I believe, we were here before, we're asking if this would, if there was a cheap way of doing this, and obviously, we found out that this is the best way to do it.
Well, Counselor, we did look in-house, and at the last meeting, I actually asked for an extension of time for this meeting, and also with me is our city engineer, Greg St. Louis, and George Lane from Facilities. In essence, we looked at the original proposal, the original scope of work, and we feel as though we are able to reduce the original request amount, which was roughly 425-plus contingency of 10 percent. We actually believe that we can save a little over 100,000 off of that by doing it in-house, for various reasons, saves the markup from general construction, and there's some work that would be subbed out, but then again, we, we're confident that we can provide substantial saving by doing a combination of in-house and subbing out certain items. Likewise, also with that saving, we were able to expand some of the amenities on the inside, in the concession stand area, and thought that overall, it's a very good project, and with the revision to the scope, we're saving over 100,000. So I'm comfortable asking the council tonight for 360,000, which would also include the contingencies in there as well, so.
What are we looking for, for time, if we approve the money tonight?
So I will, I will turn to the Director of Facilities, but last when we discussed, we were looking at a timeframe, and correct me if I'm wrong, towards the end of April, early May?
Can we invite George Lane up, please?
A second. All in favor? Nice have it. Could you state your name and title for the record, please?
George Lane, Director of Facilities?
If I may, just let me finish my last question, so what is the total we're allocating tonight? Are we allocating 621.5?
No.
360? Okay, so this is a mistake on here.
Yeah, but it, just, you know, 154,000, we divided the question, it's 467.5 for one part, 154, 154 was passed, we divided the question, that's already been passed favorable, I've already sent it to the auditor. The 467.5 is the actual number before you, and they're asking for less, but it's 467,500 is what's left of this one.
So we're going to approve 360 tonight?
If you agree with it, you'll drop it by 175.
Okay, that's all I was trying to figure, because I know we allocated money prior to this, I'm fine, thank you.
Counselor Capone? Thank you, Mr. President, 321 invited guests, first of all, I'm glad to hear that we have savings of about 100,000, so, good work there, we appreciate it. There were a couple of, you said you're going to expand the inside of the snack shack concession area, there were a couple of other issues that were out there with regards to the building, I think there were going to be two storage areas, there remain two?
Yes.
Okay, and in terms of interplay with the different teams who are using it, or different groups that are using it, do we have any kind of general idea of whether it's going to be rented, how the concessions are going to work, who's in charge of maintaining the facility, and how we're going to go about allocating, who's going to get that storage? Because you might have a multitude of groups that want that storage.
Sure, the coordination of that will be done with the folks from DPW, so with respect to pulling permits and ensuring that there's adequate coverage from the city and also from whoever is using the concession venue. The storage itself, one of the storage units will be used for the maintenance equipment of the park, and then the other storage unit would, would be, would be offered, if you will, under some type of contract for any organized group to utilize. Most likely, the most fitting, that would be those that would be utilizing the field, so hence, Little League or Pop Warner, whatnot, I would foresee utilizing that space.
Could be wrong, but that would be my understanding.
And with that, there would be some type of an agreement crafted from year to year, let's say, or season to season, in terms of maintenance, you know, must return the storage back to its condition, however, or the concession area back to its condition as it was offered and so on.
In terms of the concession area itself, is there going to be a fee, is it an annual fee by each team, is it going to be a per-use type of thing, or?
That is the, and I defer to DPW, but that is something that they will sort out in terms of how they arrange the fees and so on, for, for use of the field and the concession. Likewise, the city from time to time may wish to use that, but certainly, it's a city building, it's a public building, and in that event, too, I'm certain that there would be language, and then they would allow the city to use it for its own events in the summer, fall, and so on.
Okay, and as far as the overall cost of the project, where are we at now, if we allocate the 360, where are we at now with the full cost of the project?
Sure, in terms of the full cost of the project, including the park itself, or just-
Yeah, everything, yeah.
So the, the park itself is roughly around 3 million, I can give you a finer number, the concession stand, as I said, with continues about 360, so we're just talking just under about 3.5. And that is, again, a park fully rehab, fully redesigned.
And again, life expectancy on the park, field, all that, we're looking at, how many years?
Well, I mean, you're looking at a typical warranty for, for the turf, I believe it's a 10-year warranty, play equipment, lies, you know, I think the park itself, you're looking at a good 15 years of, of life, from corner to corner.
Okay, and in this one, with regards to the other fields that we've done across the city, where does this one come in, in terms of budget?
In terms of budget, this one is higher than Glendale Park, as I was going through, it is the, the most expensive park as of late, but also has the most amount of program space and, and amenities, so, very comfortable with that. It is a park that, it is a turf, two turf diamonds, which would allow, artificial turf, which would allow full play, starting in March, if weather permitting, and so there's certainly advantages for that, as opposed to waiting for the grass to literally to grow, to take root and so on. So it's, it's expected to be heavily utilized, and it's something that would be a great addition to our whole stock of recreational uses, facilities and so on.
And again, I appreciate the ability to do it in-house and save some money, and it's a very large project, it's a huge number, you know, the community is going to benefit from it.
Absolutely.
But it's a very large number, so, all right, thank you, I don't have any other questions.
And we are very excited to, to, to open it up, and certainly would invite everyone once, once a date is set to tour and to enjoy.
Counselor Delasol?
Good evening, I know we had a conversation about a week or so ago about the park, and-
Thank you.
It looks good, I have a few questions here, I know the weather permitting, you know, April 20th is opening day for the park. Do you think, because the concession stand, just so people know, is a concession stand slash bathrooms slash storage? April 20th, what do you see down that park for a concession stand? A building, they can go in, what do you think it's going to be at opening day?
What it would look-
Because I'll be getting calls tomorrow morning.
Sure, sure. So, as George just articulated, about 75, 80 percent complete, there will be space adjacent to the, to the facility to allow for the organized sports to, to set up, if you will, or certainly on a temporary basis, right, for their concessions and so on, but by opening day, we expect to be about 70 to 80 percent complete.
There'll be no, they're able to use the field, because that was not the concern of the president of the Little League, they know there'll be construction still going on, on the concession stand?
Right.
But they'll still be able to use the park, I'm sure it'll be coned off and caution taped off safe, so no one gets hurt, but the park will still be able to be used, correct?
Yes, and I believe, yes, the park will definitely be able to be used, that section where the concession stand is would be fenced off, certainly for safety, but access in and out of the play, of the field areas will be available. I was there this morning as well, looking at everything, and it, it's all going to come together very nicely.
I think on the field itself, Counselor Capone asked a question, was lifetime on the field, 10 to 15 years, I remember Everett Stadium, the turf, at that point, they just, you would, the cost would have to be tearing the turf up and just replacing, there's no other work besides tearing the turf up and replacing it. I'm not going to get to the cost of that right now, but the main thing is to get this open, and I just like the idea of, all the other parks we've done, it's been swing sets, water parks, this is probably the first park in a while, besides Glendale Park, that the Little League and Pop Warner and whoever else wants to use it, finally has something, we're giving it back to them, not just a water park and slides and monkey bars and all that stuff, so.
Which are also included in this park as well.
Right, I, I know-
The whole playground.
And my last question, sorry, the other part, area of the park, I don't want to get off track of it, is, when's that going to start?
So the, the playground area, all the play equipment has been set, the, with the exception of the splash area, the rubber surfacing is the, is the thing that we're waiting for now, that would take place, weather permitting, we're in February now, so hopefully sometime mid-April or so for the rubber surfacing. The splash area will be worked on, they, the crew has been out there, they'll start to come back after the recent snowstorm, they'll be working on that, that would probably happen shortly thereafter, the playground, and basketball court would probably be the last thing to, to be completed, although that is fairly relatively quick to, to complete. You'll see the plantings coming in, they've started already to bring in some, some of the loom, but you'll see that come in over the month of March, weather permitting, and so you'll see the plantings, the trees, weather permitting, in March or early April, so again, you'll see it all come together. There aren't any gaping holes or anything like that, that I'm concerned about, big thing was getting the turf in, and that's been in since, uh, last summer.
Correct, I've been down there a couple times.
It's all taken shape, taken hold nicely.
So that's my train of thought, if this gets passed tonight, do we have the contractor ready to go, or do we have to still go off a bid for this?
We've, so since the last time we've met, we've, we've put on board an architect to advance the flooring plans and so on, everything is moving forward nicely. The, waiting on a foundation plan, so contractor can go up, put the foundation in, and we, you know, we've been working with procurement and engineering, and we're, pretty much when the funding is committed, we'll be able to, to execute virtually immediately.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Counselor McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. President, I want to first congratulate and thank you, Tony, for working on this, you know that I came to the administration very concerned with the original member, and the mayor held an emergency get-together with some of the department heads to discuss this, so I want to thank you for the due diligence in you as well, George, you guys really jumped on this immediately, took action on this, so I want to thank you for saving 100,000, that's tremendous to the taxpayers in the city. My only question is, have, there be two contractors hired, one for roofing and one for the structure building, is that correct?
No, we're going to, so Rob Marucci talked to the Attorney General this morning, we're able to purchase all the materials and sub out like a frame and crew, we'll get a roofing crew involved, we're going to stay with the brick facade, so we can have a masonry crew come in, all materials could be purchased through the city, which will expedite everything.
So we'll be paying for Tina, time, material, not material, which is time.
Yeah, we can bring in a frame and crew, which typically wouldn't buy their own lumber, they'd just come in and, you know, you do your own pickoffs, so that's what we've been doing, we're getting the plants together, getting the pickoffs ready, we've got lumber prices and quotes already, ready to go, we've already been in contact with the lumber yards, we're just now, we've dropped it off to two contractors already, it's going to come in well under the $50,000 for framing, so three quotes are required, we'll move it along as quick as we can.
Three quotes are required, George?
Yes.
That was my question, if we're going to bring in any subcontractors, are three bids required for any aspect of bringing in any crews?
Yes, we're taking very, we're very careful with the number on this, we want to keep it as low as we can, we have a ceiling where we kind of took, took it on as a challenge to see if we can stay under that, and we're going to, like Tony said, you're going to get, we're going to put heat in this building, that wasn't in the original quote, and with the heater requires us to follow the energy codes, which means we now have to insulate this building as per the energy code. We're going to put a cooking stove in this, this building, which require a hood, now we have to go stainless steel hood, all welded through the roof, fire protected, so there is quite a bit more that we've added to this, and we've also dropped a number. If we got, if we got the original company to, to quote, this would have been another 150,000 higher than where they are right now, so when we say a saving is of 100,000, what you're getting, we're probably saving more towards 250,000 doing it the way we are.
Yeah, no, and I think it's tremendous, and that's why I wanted to thank you guys, because you guys immediately took action when I brought it to the, to the mayor and with my concerns. The only question is, does this tie up any timeframe if we have to go out and get three bids for any aspect of this?
No.
So this will have to go back out to bid, just like any other bid, for specific aspects of the, of the work to be done?
So the, the standard, it's a standard we do, getting the three quotes, but to answer your question directly, no, it's not going to really delay us, we, we're doing some of it now, as part of the routine.
No, that's great, I just, I just- I just wanted to know, as Councilman Del Sol said, if the funding is appropriate time, which I'm sure it will, we're going to hit the ground tomorrow with the money allocated and moving forward. We don't need to wait 20 days period to do a bid, which is typical. To go out to bid, you have to wait several weeks, get bids returned, and then do a public bid opening.
No, there are items we can already start to preorder and get quotes on and so on, get quotes on, preorder and so on.
Great.
We would not do it now without the funding in place.
Okay. No, and I'm 100% in support of this, and I think you guys have done a great job, and I look forward to seeing this project come together. Congratulations both of you.
Councilor DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. Mr. Souza, when these parks, anybody uses them, they pay a fee, is that correct?
There is a fee to, for utilization of the parks.
But do they also give you an assurance binder?
I do apologize, I would defer that question to our city solicitor.
I know, maybe that's not, but this is just something that maybe you can look into. And the reason why I'm asking this question is, what I'm getting to is, we're spending a lot of money for this hut, and six months later, a year later, we don't want to see any broken material in there, or things that are being destroyed. So, we have to let anybody understand that if they destroy anything, they're liable for it, you know, because we've had a lot of parks that have been destroyed. And I'm not saying it's the organization, but someone needs to watch what's going on. That's number one. The other question I have is, do we have a plan on, I find in the past that the city if ever builds things, then they never maintain them. So, you're putting up bricks. If there's any mortar mix, and at a certain point in two years, we need someone to fill those holes, or else it's going to freeze. So, is there a maintenance plan that you have for these parks, to keep up with them?
So, that is something that, we do have a maintenance plan, but it's actually with our new DPW director, Greg St. Louis, we're going to be working together under this CIP for this year and the forthcoming, and over the next several years, comprehensive maintenance plan, not only for the day-to-day stuff, but there's some unique stuff in our parks now. Certain parks will have shade structures, the splash pads, and there's certain work that's required for maintenance. And that is something that we are going to be fine tuning, because we all recognize.
Yeah, because, I mean, we spent a three and a half million dollars. It doesn't mean that after 10 years, we have to do this park over again. You know what I'm saying? It's a lot of money. And it's like a house. When you build a house, it doesn't mean that for 30 years, you never touch it again.
Correct.
You have to keep up with it. So, that's what I'm saying. With all these parks, that we're really spending a lot of money, I would hope that we will definitely keep up with them.
Absolutely.
But thank you very much. Great job. Thank you.
And your points are well taken. Thank you.
Councilor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Not to belabor the issue, valid point, it was something I was thinking about after I finished talking, I'm like, but I'm sure that it'll all be coordinated. Insurance policies, all that kind of stuff, who's going to be responsible for what, especially when you're talking about cooking facilities and things of that nature. The only other thing that I want to emphasize is that we're spending a lot of money on the park, we're talking about groups and organizations. I just want to ensure that this park is, the fields are going to be available to the general public as well. Because sometimes we build a monument, and then the general public doesn't get to use it, but they get to pay for it. So, I want to make sure that everyone's going to be able to use the park.
Yes, no, absolutely. Beyond the hours of organized sports, the park will be, is available for the public. And that's, that is true of all of our, of all our parks.
Excellent. Thank you. No other questions?
Anyone else? The motion, she's questioned my hands, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'd like to make a motion that we need to amend this order.
I amend it to, from $621,500 to $360,000.
Nope, nope. We're amending it.
Can I say the motion, and then you'll just, and then?
We're amending it from $457.
Hold on.
Well, this is 621 in front of us.
I understand, but I.
Clerk will clarify what the amendment is.
Aye.
Everybody just hold.
Okay. So, yes, it just, the correct order is $467,500. To amend that by $107,500 with a new total of $360,000. If anybody wants to make the motion, as I did.
Second.
Thank you.
So, we're appropriate, how much we're?
$360,000. We're reducing it by 107.5. That's the actual number. It's 467.5 minus 107.5 is 360.
Fairly accurate amendment. Okay, we have favorable action, roll call. Second, clerk will read and roll.
Councilor Capone?
Yes.
Councilor Del Sol?
Yes.
Councilor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Councilor DePiero?
Yes.
Councilor Hanlon?
Yes.
Councilor Marchese?
Yes.
Councilor Matuski?
Yes.
Councilor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Councilor Simonelli?
Yes.
And President Napolitano?
Yes.
10 ayes, Mr. President, 0 nays, as amended, it has passed.
Okay, we have one more department head?
Yes, there are, item number 12.
Second.
We have a motion to take item number 12 in second. All in favor? Opposed?
We should run rules and take item number 20.
Second. We actually have a motion already passed to take item number 12.
Well, the mayor's here.
I'm just waiting for you to approve if they want me to take item 12.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Clerk will read item number 12.
Item number 12, Mr. President. I didn't hear it.
That's I know. That's all right. Go ahead.
Mr. President, it's a resolution offered by Councilor John Lou McKinnon and Councilor Fred Capone, that the mayor personally appeared in ex-meets to address the ongoing flood problems at the culvert on Spring Street, especially in light of discussion at Everett Veterans Memorial Stadium, is to be replaced by a state-of-the-art stadium at 7A Capac.
Councilor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. If we could have the city engineer and whoever from the administration wants to come forward on this?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, let's move on. So, if the guests could please introduce yourselves for the record.
Greg St. Louis, DPW director.
Kevin O'Donnell, chief of staff.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you to our guests. I've got the response from the director of Public Works and Engineering, and as you guys know, this, I don't know, you probably brought up the speed, this has been a nightmare down there for a long time. You've got multiple parties involved, you've got a lot of money involved. Where are we at now? I've got the letter here about coastal zone management and contacting them with regards to becoming a municipal vulnerability preparedness group, being included in that group. So, where do we stand with all that? When did that contact? When was that made? What do we expect for response back? What's the next step?
Sure. So, we've met several times with a number of interested parties in the market culvert, as it's so being called. The grant program highlighted in front of you is just another piece of that puzzle where it makes us, it makes other grant opportunities in the future available to us. In addition to that, it looks at resiliency citywide from coastal storm events. So, it's another opportunity to potentially pair up this grant funds with other grant monies that have already been procured, doesn't the right word, already been received by Mass Works, which currently is, was a $2 million appropriation of the city that's currently at $1.5 million, I believe, in available funds. I've been in discussions with Mass DEP and the Chapter 91 Waterways Office in regards to the status of the culvert and the history of the project. I have ongoing correspondences with them to gain some additional clarity on this issue. I also have a meeting with Chelsea later this week to discuss where they're at with work. They're performing discharging to this culvert, to see what their status is, and quite frankly, to meet each other for the first time and see where we stand.
Okay. So, the parties involved, we've got Everett, we've got Chelsea, who else is involved in this project?
So, the Boston Market Terminal Group is sort of at the head wall of the culvert, proximate to the two recent failures in recent history. Eastern Gas has been a longtime name of record on some of the underlying land in which the culvert and filled tidelands is situated on. There are a number of beneficiaries to those licenses for filled tidelands in the area. I would not get into an exhaustive list at this time of who may be deemed subject to those licenses.
And so, you mentioned that you're going to be meeting with some folks at Chelsea and introducing one another and talking about it. What do you see as the next steps going forward with this? Obviously, have that meeting, see where they're at, what they're looking for in terms of contribution, et cetera. How do you see this playing out in your mind in terms of the steps the city needs to take in order to address this?
Sure. In my mind, there's enough players involved where if DEP could quarterback some of this, I think that would make some sense. I would sort of be a neutral party, as it were, and hopefully I can get some feedback from them in the near term.
At this particular point in time, do you have any idea of the magnitude of what's involved, amounts of money, cost, game plan in terms of how to best address this? Is it really the amount of contribution at this point from the various parties, the thing that's holding it up? Or do we, or is it bigger than that? That we still don't know what the actual thing to do is, et cetera?
The financial component is certainly the one that looms in the forefront. We've had a couple different consultants review this over the past decade. I've read a number of the reports. Any number of the proposed options seem to be in that $10 to $15 million range with inflation, so.
For the total project?
For the total project.
Okay.
Certainly, the financial piece is a large one. Ownership and responsibility of maintenance, it seems to be another topic that continues to rear its head. And there's any number of different opinions on that that have yet to be shaken up.
And in terms of the various reports that you've seen, at this particular point in time, do you have an opinion on what the proper way to go forward is to address it?
I've relayed my opinion to DEP, and I'm waiting for feedback on their consensus with my opinion.
Okay. And do you have any idea about the timeframe on that? Have they given any idea of when they get back to you on it?
Their initial opinions, they've got to me. I think they're going through the motions with their legal team as well.
Okay. Okay. And I don't know if you're prepared to talk about it tonight, but what do you see as the steps to take that you've recommended to DEP?
I'm not prepared to talk about that at this time.
Okay, all right. We can talk about that after. I appreciate that. But I, through the chair, to the chief of staff, I know, you know this thing's been going on forever, and we want to resolve it, especially if there's going to be any kind of significant activity in the area, which we've got all kind of building stuff, we can't keep having that flood there. And there's a lot here. You know, you've got the big price tag, everyone's going to figure out how much of that price tag they want to take on, how much of that can we get from the state? Maybe there's any way to get any federal monies, I don't know. And then, even after the project's completed, then you've got maintenance and all these other things that need to be worked out. But I'm sure the office is committed to it, and anything we can do, council let us know, and I'll be in touch as far as the other underlying issues. But I appreciate both being here and answering the questions. I don't have any other questions. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thanks, Mr. President. I appreciate both of you guys being here tonight, but we did ask for the mayor to come. There were some questions I had specifically for the mayor that I'll send over in an email that I'd like to have the mayor answer, because it has been a long, ongoing project or issue that's been happening. So, there is some questions that I'd like to have the mayor answer, and unfortunately, for whatever reason, he's not here, but it's a little disappointing. My question is to you, Greg, is what can you share with us that you have discussed with DEP on this? Because it has been a multi-year issue for a long period of time, I think even before Kevin, Mr. O'Donnell was chief of staff, it was going back to previous chiefs of staff. You said you're not prepared to render your opinion or give your opinion on the subject matter. Can you do that in email, share with us your feelings with the DEP? How much of that can you give to us to bring us all into the forefold here? Because we hear from residents all the time regarding this issue. And we've spent several million dollars a few years back to fix the gates, I believe, which I think temporarily helped the situation, but, you know, so we're just trying to all piece different parts of this together, and that's what I was hoping to talk to the mayor about on some of that. What can you share with us?
I'd be happy to type up my opinion and give it to the city clerk for solicitation to the councilors, if that would be inappropriate.
I would appreciate that. And I understand if you can't discuss it publicly, that's okay. But if you can just bring us into as much of the discussion as you can to keep us all on the same page, because there is many parties involved. There's a huge price tag of $10 to $15 million. There's going to be pushback from other sides and probably from us, that what we're responsible for and what we're not responsible for. And I think as a city council, we should be involved in this discussion, because it is such a large issue, and it affects so many people, especially in Councilor Capone's area, and Councilor Matuski has worked on this, many people have worked on this in years past. Whatever you can share with us, I would appreciate. I'm going to hope to have further discussions with the mayor, like I said, on this subject matter, but keeping us in the loop would be really helpful, so that we can all sort of stay on the same page. I appreciate it. Thank you.
If I could, from the chair, just a clarification, Councilor McLaughlin. The Board of Alderman did not pass the $6.5 million. There was no work passed, done, okay?
Under?
It was not passed. It was not passed. Yeah. And you could include me in that, I've been working on this project for 20 years.
Okay, absolutely.
That's all right. Councilor Marchese?
Just through, Greg, Mr. St. Louis, nice to meet you. Well, we all know what's been going on down there. We know it's, I think a lot of it could have helped, the easy way would have been we were dredging Chelsea Creek to come another 100 feet down and dig down there, because the water obviously comes up, covers the pipe on high tide. Therefore, everything goes backwards, nothing goes forward. But we paid to have some work done there. We don't own that job, do we?
I would argue.
Because we, I don't know, we didn't spend the $6 million, but I know we spent a couple hundred thousand clean, doing something down there.
Correct.
It wasn't a lot of money, it wasn't a lot, but I don't know if we assume responsibility by doing that work. That was my issue at the time. The minute we say we'll fix it, do we own it? That's the big thing you've got to watch out for.
So, several years ago, I believe, the mayor appealed for the council and requested that some of the Mass Works money be expended for emergency repairs, without taking on any of the onus and liability associated with that.
Okay, so we don't own it, we just did a favor on someone else's property for them, right?
The city's rights to discharge to the island and river are protected.
Okay, protected, okay. That's all. I thank you, that's all.
Councilman Del Sol.
Just a quick question. Boston Market and Chelsea, do they realize this may be a three-way split here for this repair?
In regard to the number of parties that may be responsible for any future repairs,[1561.12] It wasn't a lot of money. It wasn't a lot. But I don't know if we assume responsibility by doing that work. That was my issue at the time. The minute we say we'll fix it, do we own it? That's the big thing you've got to watch out for.
So several years ago, I believe, the mayor appealed for the council and requested that some of the Mass Works money be expended for emergency repairs without taking on any of the onus and liability associated with that.
Okay, so we don't own it. We just did a favor on someone else's property for them, right?
The city's rights to discharge to the island and river are protected.
Okay, protected, okay. That's all. I thank you, that's all.
Council Del Sol.
Just a quick question. Boston Market and Chelsea, do they realize this may be a three-way split here for this repair?
In regard to the number of parties that may be responsible for any future repairs, I'm not ready to speak to that at this time, but there could be multiple parties.
I think in the past, beginning, they want us to flip the whole bill way back.
I have read those opinions.
So at least we have other parties in here to help us out, hopefully.
They're always part of the conversation, yes.
Excuse me?
They're always part of the conversation. There's always interaction between, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Council McLaughlin.
Just for clarification, I don't know if Mr. Demas or somebody can answer, but I agree with Council Marquezey. I thought we spent a few hundred thousand dollars on fixing some sort of a gate or something that was not opening correctly, which wasn't allowing discharge to happen properly. I don't know if Eric Demas could come up and just clarify that, or I'm not asking for a specific answer, but I would just like to know...
Unless you've requested for Mr. Demas to provide you with that information in advance, he does reserve the right to not answer, because he's not prepared for that.
I may have some knowledge associated with that. There are two tide gates in the area. One is on Spring Street. Another is sort of southwesterly towards Chelsea from the car wash. Two tide gates are located in manholes, subsurface structures in the street. They are in a locked, open position. So they provide some restriction to the flows, but they are not holding back the tide at this point.
Yeah. I don't know if Mr. Demas can answer my question, which was just simply, was there at some point in years past, some sort of appropriation for monies allocated for this gate, for this Calvert? If we can invite up Mr. Demas, if he can answer, it's fine. If he can't, that's okay as well. I'll make that in a formal motion, invite up Eric Demas, CFO.
I can second that motion, Mr. Chairman, but we do, the charter was put into effect for a reason. I understand some questions lead to other questions, but when it's certain questions like the amount...
I'm not asking for the amount. I just want to know if there was an appropriation done or something.
No cross...
Right. I mean, I think we should go by the charter on certain things where the administration comes up prepared. They can't remember everything. I mean, they're not walking up here with a computer. So if we have specific questions of amount, of anything that was done three years ago, I mean, we can always lay this on a table and get the answer. That's not a problem. But I have no problem, if Mr. Demas knows the answer, I have no problem bringing him, you know, I'll second the motion.
Council Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. And just on that point, you know, the purpose of the questions in advance is to have more meaningful discussion when we have a member come forward. But the one thing I do want to emphasize is that the individual retains the right to raise that. If an individual guest is prepared to speak, it's up to them. They're more than welcome to. But if we do get into a situation where they're not prepared, that's up to them to pull it. I don't want to pull that on ourselves. But if they feel that they can speak intelligently to the question that's asked, by all means, let them do it. If they don't think they can, they need more time. At that point, I'd have them invoke their right under the charter.
All right, there's a motion on the floor.
Mr. President, I'm actually going to withdraw my motion. It's my motion. I have the right to withdraw it. I'm going to withdraw my motion, invite up CFO. I intended on asking the mayor, unfortunately, he's not here. It's okay, I'm not going to put the CFO on the spot. We don't have to invite him up. We can get the answer later on. I withdraw my motion.
If there's no other questions, excuse us, Mr. Mary, thanks.
Second, thank you.
All in favor?
On the piece itself, Mr. President, I know that the directors say that there's some discussions going on with Chelsea. There's waiting for some response from DEP. So what I would say is, I would request we postpone this till our first meeting in May. Hopefully, we have some information by then. If we do, we can always refer it back. If we don't, then we can get into it a little bit more.
So amend the motion by adding CFO Demas to that, and also asking the mayor to personally appear again at the next meeting?
Second on the amendment?
We have a motion to postpone this.
Till the first meeting in May?
Till the first meeting in May. And amend it to include the CFO. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the mayor? Well, the piece already includes the mayor.
Clerk will revert to the order of the meeting. Regular order.
Item number two is an order offered by Council Peter A. Napolitano. As president, new subsections be accepted regarding purchase of annual meter stickers.
Council Matuski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Meter stickers, meaning car sticker?
Yep.
I'd just like to say, Mr. President, I was pleased, very surprised to receive my residential permit sticker in the mail this year. And whoever the administration has hired to provide that service, it clears up City Hall, it saves a lot of energy for some of our senior citizens. We're quite concerned about getting that sticker on the car. So if that's what this, is that what this is about? What is this about? New subsections.
I want to ask the clerk to clarify what this piece is.
Just so you know, this comes from the administration, specifically the parking department and the police department. Currently, the cost is for 11 months, December is free for parking meters for businesses. They're $330. Currently, 330, $30 a month times 11 months. The proposed change is any entity purchasing five or more annual meter stickers would receive a 50% discount, resulting in a new cost of $165 per annual sticker. Issue one meter sticker at no cost to the president of the Chamber of Commerce is also included in this order. This is sent from the administration, the police department, and our parking clerk. It is just to amend it to give the businesses a little discount. Those are the annual meter stickers that go in there for them and their employees.
Will these be restricted to residents only or to anybody?
No, so this is specifically for the businesses. Like if you own a business down, say, in the square, some of the businesses ask for multiple stickers, so their employees and the owners can park in that area. So these are those meter stickers, so they can park in that area during the day, during work hours.
Basically, they're prepaying ahead of time for their meters.
Instead of using the quarters, so they don't have to come up...
So that way, the employees can have a parking spot.
Council Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, Clark, just for the clarification on this. So right now, as it stands with this, one sticker would be 330?
Right. What they're doing is just they're adding a discount for having five or more.
So if you do five of more, is it, it's 50% per?
Resulting in a new cost of $165 per sticker, annual sticker.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And also, they're adding one meter sticker at no cost to the president of the Chamber of Commerce.
Have we done that before?
This is new. That's part of the amendment.
Okay.
That's the new order. It's a new subsection under 18-163 of the revised ordinances.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Council McLaughlin.
Mr. President, I just wanted to know how they came to the $330 number. I don't know if the city clerk explained that, or if somebody can't explain it.
It's, it's, if you, can I speak? Yes. So it's currently $30 a month. That's what the meter sticker is. That's what they are currently charged. And they're still going to get charged $30 a month if they have under five of these stickers. It's if a business comes up and asks for five or more, they're going to give them a discount to try to cut the cost for local businesses. I mean, this affects a lot of the small businesses down in the square, businesses down near the fire station, there's not a lot of parking. And we give this opportunity to business owners and their employees, so they can have them park at meters without having to run out and feed the meter. And it's a bonus for them, and they have to park here, so it's a little benefit.
I believe when we first passed this on the common council, we took an average of what, an average month's usage would be, and that's what the formula became. Okay, now, as it's increased, it's probably increased as well.
My last two quick questions on this. Is the sticker, amount of stickers endless? You can, if you buy five, if you get five or more, the breakdown becomes less. But can you request 20 stickers if you so choose?
I only know so much, so I'm not the parking clerk. I know...
Because at that point, then I'm concerned, are the businesses or anybody going to try to buy them at $165, sell them off for 250?
Well, it's a license plate. You have to attach a license plate, you have to show registration.
I have a friend that owns a business in Everett Square, and I want to park there because I live in the North Shore. I want to park in Everett Square, get on the bus and go to work every day. So now I'm paying 250 for the year to have a parking spot in Everett Square.
I don't know if anybody's ever thought of that before, but thank you for putting that out in the ether.
Yeah. I appreciate, glad that I thought about that, actually.
Yeah, so...
Because it absolutely can happen. With so many possibilities out there.
There's two, there's two levels of concern when we first passed this ordinance back years ago on the common council. One is making sure that there's available parking. Two, to make sure the city gets the revenue for that available parking. I believe that the intent is this, is to discount multiple stickers because, to ease some of the burden on these businesses. Don't forget, the businesses still have to pay for these stickers upfront. And that's quite, when you start getting over five stickers, you're talking about a significant amount of money.
I respectfully think that this needs to go into committee, and I think there needs to be further discussion on this before we can pass it tonight. I'm going to put a motion forward that we send this to Legislative Affairs and Elections Committee for further discussion.
Is that the right one? Community and Business?
CBD.
I would recommend CBD, and I would also, you know, you should invite the parking clerk. I mean, I can only give you a basic. We touched on this a little bit, just so you know.
Council Capone, then Council, okay, Council Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Capone. I likewise feel somewhat baffled by this particular piece of ordinance, this particular ordinance. You know, we have had these store owners complain for how long that nobody can get into their store, because there's always someone in front of their store. The person that's in front of the store is the store owner. They're the person that's going to get the permits. They're the person that's going to be parked in front of the building, including their workers. So the people that are complaining about there's no place to park in the square will now have it even worse, because they'll never get a spot to appear for the whole year. These things are going to be started forever. What we should do, really, is to have, if these people want this kind of a parking permit, is have them give it to them, but make them park in a lot someplace, and have that store open. And the other thing they should do is limit it to two hours parking, because people come and park there all day long, and they'll just stay there. And that's not good, you know, because now, and the people, if we do this, the store owners are still going to say, we have no place for customers to come and park our vehicles. So I'll second the motion to have it referred to the committee or any committee, to have further discussions on this and further study on this. I think it's a bad thing to do right now with the way it's stated. I think it's really bad, and I think it will affect the store owners more than they possibly can believe, because then everybody will be part in one of the business. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion to send it to committee? The Community and Business Development?
And invite the parking clerk, I believe?
Invite the parking clerk.
Could I be invited to that meeting as a guest, please?
Ms. McCory can send out the invitation. We'll ask her.
You'll be there. I'll be there. We'll make sure that we'll include all members invited. You show, you show; you don't, you don't. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. President, can we suspend the rules and take items three, four, seven, eight collectively?
Four, seven, and eight collectively.
Given that, move for favorable action. Do I have a nose?
There's a motion to take four items collectively. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The clerk will read the items.
Item number three is an order offered by Council Peter A. Napolitano. As president, it's a petition for second-class motor dealer license renewal for 380 Auto Find at 382nd Street. Item number four is an order offered by Council Peter A. Napolitano. As president, a petition for a renewal of second-class motor dealer license for Bostonian Auto Body at 141 Bow Street. Item number seven is an order offered by Council Peter A. Napolitano. As president, a petition for second-class motor dealer license renewal for White's Auto Sales at 79 Vine Street. And item number eight is an order offered by Council Peter A. Napolitano. As president, for a petition for second-class motor dealer license renewal for E and C Foreign Auto Repair LLC at 29 Garden Street.
Council Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Papers of order. These are all in order, I would imagine. They wouldn't be here.
Yes, I never put them before.
Favorable order. Favorable action on the pieces. Ask that one vote be cast, and clerk record it accordingly.
Clerk will read the roll.
Council Capone?
Yes.
Council Del Sol?
Yes.
Council DeFlorio?
Yes.
Council DePerro?
Yes.
Council Hanlon?
Yes.
Council Marquezey?
Yes.
Council Matuski?
Yes.
Council McLaughlin?
Yes.
Council Simonelli?
Yes.
President Napolitano?
Yes.
Ten ayes, zero nays on all four of us. You have passed.
Clerk will read item number five.
Item number five is an order offered by Council Peter A. Napolitano. As president, an order granting permission for a special liquor license permit at the Edward G. Connolly Center on March 15, 2018.
Favorable action on the order.
Second to motion, Mr. Chairman. First favorable action, second. Clerk will read the roll.
Council Capone?
Yes.
Council Del Sol?
Yes.
Council DeFlorio?
Yes.
Council DePerro?
Yes.
Council Hanlon?
Yes.
Council Marquezey?
Yes.
Council Matuski?
Yes.
Council McLaughlin?
Yes.
Council Simonelli?
Yes.
And President Napolitano?
Yes.
Ten ayes, zero nays, Mr. President.
You've passed the orders. Clerk will read item number six.
Item number six is an order offered by Council Peter A. Napolitano. As president, a petition for motor vehicle dealer license for Malden Auto Repair and Seals at 80 Tremont Street.
Council Marquezey.
Are they being relocated there?
I'm sorry?
They're being relocated there, right?
No, this is, so, yeah, it's confusing. There are actually two Malden Autos. One is called Malden Auto of Everett, and this is called Malden Auto Repair. They are separate businesses.
This is a redo, what is this?
This is a renewal, this is their second year in business. They took over the old Mel's Auto, if you remember that, over by the Seven Acre Park.
Papers of order?
Papers are in order.
Favorable action.
This is their second year in business.
Second to motion. Favorable action, second. Clerk will read the roll.
Council Capone?
Yes.
Council Del Sol?
Yes.
Council DeFlorio?
Yes.
Council DePerro?
Yes.
Council Hanlon?
Yes.
Council Marquezey?
Yes.
Council Matuski?
Yes.
Council McLaughlin?
No.
Councilor Simonelli?
Yes.
And President Napolitano?
Yes.
Nine ayes, one nays, Mr. President.
Clerk has passed the order. Clerk read item number nine.
Mr. President? Mr. President?
Councilman?
If I may, I'm kind of curious that the ward council voted no against this. I'd like to ask for reconsideration.
Motion for reconsideration, have a second?
Excuse me, Council?
On that motion, Mr. President?
Are you seconding it?
No, I'd like to speak on the motion.
Michael seconded it. Okay. All in favor? Okay, you have the item back before us.
With all due respect to Councilman Capone, I mean, we're not all going to agree on every issue here. The councilman from the ward decided to vote against it. He has his reasons. He didn't feel like he wanted to discuss it. That's, you know, if you want to pry it out of him, then he feels comfortable with it. But if we keep doing that at every meeting, I just want to clarify here. It doesn't, you know, that's not, that's not the correct way we do business here. I have a right to vote no on any given subject matter. You know, he just said no, and he usually speaks quite a bit. So, you know, you know, you've got to respect somebody's opinion up here. I mean, you know, if you want to find out and he feels like speaking on it, I have businesses that I just voted yes on, that, you know, you know, maybe they'll improve their property and so forth, but, you know, I'm just saying, you can't be doing something like that at every, but that's your opinion, you know, everybody, to me, he voted no, and that's the end of the story. he voted no, and that's the end of the story. But if you want to get into detail and he feels comfortable with it, I don't know. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I do appreciate my colleagues' position on that. It just, it just struck me as curious. So, rather than put the council on the spot, because as my colleague has stated, he is not bashful. So, if he has something to say, he will say it. But what I will do then is I'll just direct my question to the clerk. Is there anything that's happening in that area that should cause any concern?
There is nothing. I've been down there only one time, but for the property in the back. Not, it is a second location that was in the back, somebody else was renting, not for their property. All their papers are always in order. They call me early and make sure the paperwork is in. They keep their property pretty well cleaned for a body shop and motor dealer. I mean, I've never had any complaints from the neighbors, ever. They've only been in, you know, business about a year and a half, but they've been good neighbors, and they, they call me, and they ask permission for everything. So, they're really good.
Okay. So, with that, with that said, the motion has come up before us. If we need to vote on it, I'll be voting no, so that it doesn't come back before us. But, you know, I don't know that, once it's second, I don't think I can withdraw my motion, but...
It's coming up before us.
Yeah. So, with the, with the roll call, I plan on voting no.
Councilor McLaughlin.
I'm not going to fully get into it this evening, but there are concerns from local neighbors on the number of cars and where they're parking them. There is an inlet right next to them that cuts across the force road that has become public access, and there's always vehicles parked on that stretch of Prescott Street Extension, if you will. And there is some question about, about those vehicles. I need to speak with the city clerk. I thought he was in the no on this. I guess that he wasn't, and I didn't know this was coming before us tonight, so I need to have that discussion with him.
I'll take it.
That's the reason why I chose to vote no on this this evening, because I need to clarify a few things and get some answers. I'm not against the business, and maybe they need to understand some of the rules and regulations. I have heard from several of the neighbors in that neighborhood that are concerned by some of their business practices.
If I could make a suggestion, what I usually do in my, in my cell, when I have residents complain about licensed businesses, I make sure they direct those complaints to the clerk, so it's documented. This way here, it's on record.
That's what I thought was happening, and that's why when our city clerk just stated what he stated, I'm just surprised, because I thought those were, communications were coming through to him. So, I need to enlighten the city clerk on that, and, you know, city clerk, Canelio, and I are good, and we can work through that together. So, that's the reason why I chose to vote no on this this evening.
Your pleasure. Okay. Clerk, read the roll.
This is for reconsiderations.
No means no. No means it'll stand as voted.
It will stand as what we voted on.
Yes.
Clerk, read the roll.
Yep. Counselor Capone.
No.
Counselor Delasola.
No.
Counselor DeFlorio.
No.
Counselor DePerro.
Nope.
Counselor Hanlon.
No.
Councilor Marchesi.
No.
Councilor Matusky. Councilor McLaughlin.
No.
Councilor Simonelli.
No.
And President Napolitano.
No.
That would be ten ayes, zero ayes, Mr. President.
Reconsideration's failed. Clerk will read item number nine.
Item number nine is a tough one. Mr. President, this is a retirement notice from Caroline McCory, Administrative Assistant Office Manager for the Everett, City of Everett City Council Office. She will be retiring effective May 31, 2018, after 33 years of service.
Counselor DePerro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to wish Ms. McCory well. I was the president of this body last year, and we had a great relationship working together. She's always been very helpful to all of us, and as Councilwoman DeFlorio just mentioned, she does deserve a medal for dealing with all of us for so long, and I just want to wish her well, and she's been a big asset to all of us. Thank you.
Councilor Hanlon.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, likewise, I would like to thank Caroline for all she's done, and for me personally, she's done tons of things. And we will certainly miss her. But on the motion itself, I would like to refer this to the city clerk and to the president of the, of the city council to post haste, start the procedures to get a new administrative assistant. You know, it has to be posted, put in the papers, and she's, Caroline will be leaving May 31, unfortunately, and we don't want to start the procedures at that later date, because then we'd be months without a, an administrative assistant, so we need to start it as soon as possible. So, refer it to the president and to the city clerk.
We've got a motion, accept the communication, place and file.
Yep. Reluctantly accept the communication. I just, I just want to weigh in that, I know...
Actually, if you could, Councilor McLaughlin's next.
Sorry.
I, there is one, one piece tonight that I want to vote no on, and it's this one. Because none of us want to accept her, her retirement letter, although she rightfully deserves it and is leaving her head health very high, and we appreciate all that she's done in her 33 years of service for our community. I got to know Caroline as a young boy coming up to the council meetings and being able, longer than I've been serving on this honorable board. She's always been somebody that I respected and looked up to, somebody that has always given us great advice and given us great sound of her opinions. She will be greatly missed, and I wish her the best of luck in future endeavors, and know that she will always have friends here in this building and across the city. Thank you.
Councilor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, reluctantly accept the communication as well. Caroline's been great. We've all dealt with her over the years. At one point, this poor woman was dealing with 25 individuals, so I can't even imagine. But she's always been professional, she's always been helpful. We, we've been so fortunate to have her here as an asset for this office, and, you know, we're going to have to look for those same qualities in the next person. I just want to let my colleagues know that we have a Legislative Affairs meeting on Thursday, and one of the items that's in there with the work, the, the review, is the job qualifications, duties, et cetera. So, hopefully, we'll iron that out at our next meeting, and we'll get it out to the floor, so that we can go ahead and get it advertised. Thank you.
Councilor Matusky.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, Councilman that spoke previously, right on target, Ms. McCory has been outstanding. I've been with her 33 years. She has kept this, that office nonpolitical. And that's the most important thing, because, you know, I know we all have best friends in various... We only appoint four people here: clerk of committees, the city clerk, the assistant city clerk, and that office over there. That is the first line of defense for our city council. Anybody, especially with this casino coming in and all the development, they want to know who we are. And she is the one that they're, I don't know how many times people have said that the woman in the office directed me to you because you live there or a certain issue and so forth. She has been really outstanding, and the main reason for that is, I mean, she'll attend a birthday party, but you won't see her holding a sign in Everett Square for any candidate, okay? You won't see her attending fundraisers, you know, and I have no problem with that, but I, I really do, in a way. You know, to fill that vacancy that's coming up, and it has, doesn't happen too often. I think we had Rose Mariara's when I first got in here in 81, she was unbelievable. We had a woman that stayed for about seven or eight months. Of course, Mr. Seaw was here. He was here on a full-time basis, so the office was a little different structure. And then we had a gentleman that was only here for a brief period of time, but there's only really been two, two people since I've been here. And she is really, you know, we all grew old together, kind of, well, older, I should say. But she's been wonderful, you know, and the, for us, and it takes that seat, you take a page out of her book, and I know that the Legislative Committee is looking into, we have a piece on here tonight to have a probationary period to make sure, you know, it's good that we're, I'm best friends with this one and best friends with that one. I've heard all that over the years. When push comes to shove, you've got to do the right thing in that office for every one of us. We are the city council, not the four people we appoint, just so you understand. You know, and I've, you'd never see Kevin Dunn out in the square, let me tell you, on a sunny Saturday afternoon holding a sign. He's got better things to do. And there's no reflection on anybody, but enough is enough. I've seen this, you know, what's happening up here bend a little too much to that angle. And I hope the new legislative aide person understands. I could just picture it, oh, Matusky just called, guess what he's going to do? I could just see that happening, and, you know, and I know it's going to happen, and good luck to the Legislative Aide Committee to replace her, because it's more or less in the bag anyway, but I know you're going to advertise it and so forth. And it's, it's no hidden secret. I mean, you can all scratch your head and go, what's Matusky talking about? You know what I'm talking about. Let's do the right thing and keep it nonpolitical. She's an example of what, and she's been up here, she gets along with everybody. And it's unfortunate that she hasn't been here for the last couple of weeks due to family illnesses, but, you know, I've seen, you know, the hip replaced, the knee replaced, and she's seen some health issues with me and my, you know, and family members passing away. So, we all count on that office for more than just some work. It's compassion, nonpolitical, that's the main thing. And she's done that. I don't know how she did it, but she did. And I, I wish her the best of luck and enjoy retirement. Thank you.
Councilor Simonelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. True you for Councilman Simonelli. Caroline has been a great help to me. With my speech condition, we all wish her very well.
Thank you. Councilor Marchesi.
You know, I wish Caroline very well. She's been tremendous, but she's still here till May, and I think we should, we could, you know, we're burying her four months before she's retired. I don't know where we're going here, but we just have a notice here, and I hope we put someone in line that can learn under her for a month or two. That, that should be the important part of this.
Councilman DeFlorio.
Councilor Marchesi stole my whole line. I think he read it off my desk, so, thank you.
That's not Paul, he can't read.
Councilman Delasola.
Just want to wish Caroline good luck in the future and well-deserved retirement. Thank you.
Okay, if I could from the chair, I mean, I was elected one of six. We turned the common council by a third, and let me tell you, it was not easy for them to get us up to speed. Fortunately, people like Caroline, Chuck DePerry, a few others took a number of us under our wing, got us, got us hitting the ground running. The key thing here, to piggyback on what Councilor Matusky was saying, because I share his sentiments here. Caroline's been doing this so long that it looks easy, but it's not an easy job. There's a lot of things that she does that you might not even be aware of, okay? And that's something we need to keep in, in mind. We're going to be at some point in the next, and this is the part of the reason why I had Legislative Affairs address the, the, the job description. Want to make sure that we are looking and fully aware of what the requirements are going to be for the person to fill that position. And the thing is that we are only going to be as good as the support we have. We've been pretty good the last 35 years. Well, now she's taking care of us, she's time for her to take care of herself, and she will be sorely missed.
Okay, so we have a motion, accept this communication, place it on file, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
That wasn't the motion.
Oppose the motion? Yes, it was.
No, the motion was to refer it to the...
Place it on file.
Okay.
Councilor Hanlon, you're on.
Well, same motion, I'll do, make a motion to refer this to the city clerk and to the president of the council to start the procedures. We have a new administrative assistant as soon as possible, if not sooner.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read number, item number 13.
Item number 13 is an ordinance offered by Councilor Peter A. Napolitano as President. An ordinance to amend the dumpster fee schedule, section 16-78, maintenance of the revised ordinances of the City of Everett.
Councilor DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. President. All these ordinances coming in front of us and the fees, okay? I mean, I don't want to start a problem here, but we, we don't have this stuff in front of us, so is it a problem?
The committee had it.
Well, the committee has it, but we don't have it. I'm not on that committee. So, this is a problem. It's an ongoing problem that the, if the committee gives this to us, put it in our mailbox, do something, so we can see it. I mean, we're, we're voting blind over here. I'm not going to vote on this. My recommendation is that we lay this stuff, postpone this to our next meeting until we get the schedule.
Second motion. Councilor Matusky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilwoman DeFlorio is right, they don't have, we did have, the Ways and Means Committee had this in our committee last week. We had a full quorum, and the fire chief was there. Why, this, shouldn't it read, "Communication from the Ways and Means Committee," and then you vote on the ordinance? But I don't see the communication yet.
Yeah.
What was the...
The clerk committees was instruct, instructed me that they, that it was mailed out to everyone. I, I know I put it in your mailboxes, but, or on your desk, either, or...
On that, on that, I, I, for one, Mr. President, you know, I'm getting pretty good at sending emails at this point, but still no expert. I still am a little old-fashioned. I want that calendar that's required, and it's in our charter, to be mailed the Saturday before any meeting. That's on your agenda, that's another subject. But I want to know what the various, I'm not on the Legislative Affairs Committee. I want to read what they did in their committee. We spent an hour and a half with the fire chief and the city, Mr. Demus and a few others here on this matter. It's increasing the dumpster fees that haven't been increased in 30 years. But you want to see what they actually are, and we, the committee report actually should say that was favorable, but of course, you don't have that. So, it's laid on the table, and for those members who want to see what the fees are going to be.
Is this going to cause, I'm sorry, is it going to cause a problem if we postpone this? Okay, let's just postpone it to the next meeting.
Lay on the table. There's no such thing as postpone.
Second motion.
You were it. You're right.
Let's clear that up, Mr. President.
I'll, I'll clear it up.
Let's, no, no, Mr. President, I've been up here 38 years. The motion should be made to lay on the table to the next meeting. The word postpone has been thrown around here. Where did that come from?
It's, it's, it's from Robert's Rules, Counselor. Postpone is the correct motion to postpone to another time or another meeting.
Just this week?
No, but lay on the table...
No, it's lay on the table, Mr. President. You've been up here long enough to know what that term's at.
To lay on the table, if you'd like me to...
That's the correct term. That's what we've been using for so many years.
And I, and I, and I agree that you have.
I'm not reinventing the wheel here. Well, you changed the, Mr. President, there's things being changed up here, little by little. The word postpone, it may seem small to you, but laying on the table is what we've been doing for forty years. There's no such thing as a postpone. So, why are we, why are we reinventing the wheel? You know, the, the correct title is to lay it on the table for two weeks, so there's no, postpone till when?
Two, you, you...
No, but it doesn't say that. Lay on the table for two weeks is what you'd normally do, to the next meeting. Lay on the table to the next meeting. You can do what you want. You want to throw the word postpone in that hasn't been used since I've been up here, other than the last two or three meetings? You know, I'd hate to be a nitpicking, and I'm not, but let's, let's stay on track here. I've never heard postpone.
This is one of the reasons we're going to be conducting another parliamentary procedure training class in March. Okay, it's, the clerk and I, and former clerk, Matarazzo, have been discussing this for about the last month and a half. You're absolutely correct. We need to make sure we're all on the same page.
My motion is to postpone this to our next council meeting.
Okay, for now, if the clerk, if, everybody, just hold off until the clerk answers the question, please.
Okay. So, under Robert's Rules parliamentary procedure, postpone is to postpone to a later time, date, or next meeting. To lay on the table, you are correct, that is used. Lay on the table, usually, the, the correct way to use it is I'm going to lay this on the table till, so say, Mr. Demus was downstairs, and you had, you had a piece that Mr. Demus would need to speak on. To lay on the table, you lay it on the table, wait for Mr. Demus to come back up and speak on the issue. That's the correct motion, and you are correct. I was a common counselor. We always use lay on the table, and I agree with you, that's how we've always done it. But correct parliamentary procedure is postpone to a time, a specific time or date, or another meeting, and then lay on the table is for something earlier in the evening and that same meeting. I'm going through parliamentary procedures, so I can learn this correctly, so I can run our meetings correctly. So, I've been reading a lot of this. So, I do understand your frustration, I do understand that that is how we used to do it, but that is the correct motion, Counselor.
When you lay it on the table, it's still on the table. You can't adjourn the meeting while it's still on the table. By, by making the motion to postpone it, you're postponing it to a specific date to be on the next agenda.
Mr. President, I just want to clarify something here. Lay on the table for two weeks. I have seen that thousands of times over the years. It's, it's just a, you know, it's a small item, but I could see people tinkering with the city government at every meeting. There's a little change here and a little change there. And before you know it, I'm going to be left on the deck a little bit, because laying on the table for two weeks is what we've been, that's what the councilwoman suggested we do, and, you know, with the word postpone, it's just been used in the last couple of meetings. But that's okay. But I'm going to keep a close eye on these little changes, because I really believe that it's unnecessary. Yeah, you can use the word postpone, no big deal.
Councilor McLaughlin.
I just wanted to ask that all committee reports are mailed out to all members, or they're not mailed out to all members? Mr. City, Mr. Clerk, that's a question for you.
All right, everybody let the clerk answer, please.
So, committee reports are strictly through Mr. Burley and Ms. McCory. Under the new structure that we're working on, the president and I are working on with the, with the new legislative aide, there is going to be new procedures. So, just so you know, we didn't want to, to start new procedures when Ms. McCory is starting to retire, so we're going to start fresh, and you're going to have the new computer systems. You're going to be mailed out full documents. The, the new legislative aide and I will finish a, an agenda together at the end of the day. That's how it's going to be done, where it isn't done that way now. So, we're going to work more in conjunction than ever before. So, it's going to be more streamlined. I'm going to be a little more involved than I am on agendas and reports being sent out. So, it's, we're starting a new process, but I think Ms. McCory does usually send it out. I can't tell you for sure, because that is strictly in her job description.
And I, and I hope that it's either happening or will start to happen, because I agree with Councilor DeFlorio. We need, everybody needs to be on the same page with all matters, but I thought I have received reports in the past on committees that I wasn't a part of. I thought I've received reports in the mail on those. That's why I wanted to clarify that.
Even if they're not mailed out, even if they're put in the mailbox, when the fees, when the schedule fees, that's all I'm asking, okay? Even on our desk, all right, because we don't need to have them a month ahead of time, but even to have them on our desk, so we see the difference of what we're charging and what we're going to. So, I think it would be much easier and more understanding, that's all. Thank you.
Again, one of the things that, once we start these computer courses, and again, as I told many of you at the last meeting, our goal is to have a paperless meeting before the end of the year. The entire ordinance order, whatever the case may be, will be fully written out on your, on your, on your laptop. And, and I, and I share your sentiments, Councilor Matusky. Nothing, I'm not changing anything here. We've identified a little, between the last session and this session, a few loose ends. We're just trying to get everything tightened up, so we're all on the same page, because we've all been doing this at various degrees of time, and you're, you're right. But if we've been stating something a certain way incorrectly all along, unbeknownst to us, if we're discovering that it should be another way, then we've got to be a little bit flexible as well. But I agree with you. We've all learned it, we've all been doing it a certain way. No one person is making decisions to make these type of changes. That's not the intent here. Motion, postpone it. We have a motion to postpone item 13. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number 15.
Item number 15 is an ordinance offered by Councilor Peter A. Napolitano that in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 2, Section 4 of the City of Everett Charter and Chapter 7, Section 7-163 of the revised ordinances of the City of Everett, the president of the city council shall receive a stipend of $2,400, not including the annual salary of the city council beginning January 1, 2020. The stipend of the president shall receive 2% increase, call it increase annually to coincide with the 2% increase for all city council salaries.
You prefer to the Ways and Means?
Second.
Second.
Is that worth it?
Actually, because the legislative code is done by Legislative Affairs, I believe that would be the proper motion.
I'm sorry. I'll take my motion and...
I'd like to make a motion to refer this to the Legislative Affairs Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. One, record Councilor Hanlon is opposed.
I'm writing it down, Counselor. And item number sixteen, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counselor Wayne Matusky, that a representative of Cataldo Ambulance Service appear next, to the next City Council meeting on their policy of taking customers to Witten Hospital only in emergencies.
Mr. President, I have some questions for this ambulance company that's been in Everett for many years in providing a service to our community, but over the last year and a half, I've got some, I'd like some answers regarding what I have on the calendar here, so I'd like to postpone, lay it on the table for the next meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Anybody?
Oh, oh, certified letter also to the Cataldo Ambulance Company, make sure they get it, I don't know if they operate out of Everett, the Everett one would be appropriate.
I think his headquarters is in Somerville, but I'll get Mr. Cataldo's.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you.
Counselor Hamlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, is there any way, any department or any service that we provide in the city that licenses Cataldo Ambulance? Do we know?
So, I don't know of any licensing, I just, I know that we have a contract with them, with the phone calls, we get a dollar a call or something like that, they, they give back to the community, other than that, you know, when there's emergency calls, I know they give us something back.
What department oversees, oversees?
I don't know of any licensing, I couldn't tell you, but I could look into it for you if you'd like.
Would you please, and, and have it attached to this, this piece of business too, because we should know if there is someone in the city that actually has authority over them, you know, so that we could do something with it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Okay, so we have a motion to hold to send this to committee?
No, no.
Lay it on the table. Hold over till, postpone, till our next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number seventeen.
Item number seventeen, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counselors Wayne Matusky, John Leo McKinnon, and Stephen Simonelli. The City Council, when filling the legislative aide position, consider placing a probationary job performance period of six months to evaluate chosen candidate.
Counselor Matusky.
Thank you, Mr. President, I, we talked about this, it's probably a good thing when Ms. McCory gave her a notice. We all know where I'm coming from, a few of the councilmen that I have talked to suggested a six-month period, somebody said a ninety-day period, but according to Councilwoman Rosa DeFlorio, the state is all six months, but, for a performance evaluation. Now, the reason why we put this on here is not because, if the, if a person can't, you've got to have people skills in this, this office, how to deal with people over the phone and so forth. This job is a long-term job, it's Ms. McCory thirty-three years, Ms. Rosemary Harris was here for twenty years, I believe. So, with that being said, I'd like to refer this to the Legislative, Legislative Affairs Committee and let them either decide whether it's six months or ninety days. But on behalf of the sponsors, we believe that a job like this, you can't just hand over and say, we renew you every, was it every five years, or every four years?
No, according to our Legislative Code, it's not.
About this job, it's on the other.
Only mine and the assistant city clerk are five-year terms.
And the clerk of committees is.
Is two years.
Two years, okay. So this is a permanent position, so we got to make sure that this person's able to have the right social skills to deal with the members of, eleven members of the council, most importantly, and the general public, because people do call the council office and ask for information, and it's worked pretty good over the years, so, I just hope that the Legislative Affairs Committee can possibly add this into their equation, thank you.
Second motion.
Item number eighteen, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counselor Wayne Matusky, that a representative from EverSource Company appear March twelfth, to the March twelfth meeting, and to be, invite, invite, be sent certified mail. Any copy placed in the sponsor's mailbox relative to the construction of a twenty-five-foot wall with murals along the length of Broadway.
Thank you, Mr. President, once again, a surprise has hit me, reading one of the local newspapers that EverSource, what's, it's called, most people know what is Boston Edison, you know that property, that is the gateway to the City of Everett, it's across from the casino, and EverSource hasn't been maintaining that property for the last few years. As we all know, that there's a transfer station across the street that the City of Boston owns, and it, it's beautiful. The landscaping is unbelievable, I don't, never see anybody walking on it, but it does look nice aesthetically. Now, Boston Edison, or EverSource, has neglected that lower Broadway area, Mr. President, there's hubcaps every day, there's pieces of bumper, there's glass, people actually walk and jog, and little by little, more and more people are using that area to walk, actually people, but they don't walk on that side, because they know it's a mess. So this multi-billion dollar company that supplies electricity to the City of Boston in the surrounding area, wants to put up a twenty-five-foot concrete wall from the Little Bridge up until Beecham Street, the Minicello's Metal Factory.
Dexter.
Now, they're probably entering some kind of collusion with the casino people, I, you know, I just can't picture a twenty-five-foot wall with some kind of mural. You know, it was my understanding, and I think you remember, a few years back, that they were supposed to maintain some landscaping there, plant trees so you wouldn't see these transformers. But this is a new proposal, I'd like somebody to come up here and explain to the, to me and the rest of the city, the members here, and actually show us what they're going to do. Now, you know, I just found out about the Everett Stadium possibly being a hotel. I am not going to let this slip by, I want to know what's going on, and even if they do put up the cement wall, Mr. President, I'd like to see some trees planted, or some grass, a buffing zone. They have cheesed out on their landscaping for years. You know, back about twenty years ago, they did make a, a strong effort to do the right thing there, but they've just neglected it, I, they don't even pick up scrap metal from the street, and there's quite a bit around there. So I, I think it's important that we all know that what's going on and with this wall, twenty-five feet is as high as the ceiling here.
Technically, we're, we're running out of the stadium outside, but, but, we want to handle a foot wide, this, this room is not a twenty-five feet, this room is wider than that, so if you think about it, the twenty-foot, twenty-five-foot wall is about half the size of a, of a.
Which is a large wall. Now, depending, you know, I'm sure that the Wind Casino people must have talked to them, and, you know, there is some concern about people getting into that fenced, the fenced area where these transformers are, creating a problem. So, my, my recommendation is to have a certified letter sent to the EverSource Company, I thought it was Exelon, what is the name of this company that owns that show, Shooting Match Day?
It, it is not EverSource, I will, if you just direct me to find, you know, send it to the company, I believe it's part of Exelon.
They've gone, they changed the name for corporate reasons a couple of months.
I'm, I'm pretty sure it's Exelon though.
But anyway, I just think it's important that we know what's, what's going to happen down there, and I want to know what it, I want some trees planted also. I'm not just going to sit back and, oh, there it is. People are going to ask me about this, and they already have, so let's invite them up here to, yeah, the old days, they, they kept it up. But thank you to the membership, I think it's important that we find out what's going on there.
Second.
Motion to send all people to the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
Yeah, whatever response back next to me, right.
Clerk will read item number nineteen.
Item number nineteen, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counselor Wayne Matusky, that Mr. Sousa from Community Development appear to update on the issue of the municipal parking lot between Broadway and School Streets next meeting on the long-awaited fence and landscaping improvements.
Thank you, Mr. President, I did speak to Mr. Sousa, Sousa tonight, and he's going to explain exactly what's happening down there, he wasn't prepared, of course, the invitation is for next week anyway, so I'll make a motion to postpone this for two weeks.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
Item number twenty, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counselor Michael J. McLaughlin, to invite the mayor, superintendent of schools, and Eric Demus to the Ways and Means Committee to discuss the two million dollar deficit in the school department.
Thanks, President. Mr. President, I would just like to refer this to committee and have a discussion with all parties involved. The number still is lingering out there, although superintendent has said that he won't be back to the City Council, I'd like to know where they've come up with the closing of the gap of the two million dollar deficit that is, was lingering up until, I saw a recent article in one of the local newspapers, that he stated that he would not be back for the City Council. So I'd like to just know where that game plan came from and how we were able to close the gap, so I respectfully ask that this goes to the Ways and Means Committee, thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. President, with all respect to Counselor McLaughlin, I understand what his intention is here, but we did our job two weeks ago, we supplemented the school department's budget, I don't think there's any need to rehash what happened two weeks ago, it's on the school department now to fill the rest of the gap. Let the task force meet, let the operational audit commence, and then we'll talk and see where we're at. And to be honest, on a point of order, I'm a little offended by some of the superintendent's comments at the school committee meeting last week, repeatedly referring to this board as a charade, foolishness, and cheap shots, I don't think that should be, should not be taken lightly by all of us, and that's my piece, let's refer this back to sponsor, and enough with the games and move forward, thank you.
Second, Counselor McLaughlin. Thank you, Mr. President, I also agree to refer this back to sponsor. There were, there were two bodies over here, we are the council, we give the budget, it's up to the school committee to take care of everything else when it comes to the schools, okay? We were told that, that's all we could give is five million dollars, because of our bond rate or whatever it is, but our chief financial officer says that's all we can afford to give. This is what we gave, now let the school committee do their job. So, I'm not going to go through another three and a half hour, we spent four hours on this last week, okay? So enough is enough, I have no problem spending time on things that, that are constructive, but this is not constructive to me right now, thank you.
Mr. President, on the motion.
Thank you, Mr. President, I, I respectfully disagree with my colleagues, we are here to represent the people of Everett, if there is still potential for layoffs at some point in the school year, we owe it to the children and the teachers, the employees of the school department, to get a clarification. Until I hear from the superintendent and the mayor that there is a concrete plan in place, I'm not asking to supplement any additional appropriations, I'm just asking for what that game plan looks like. It is now our responsibility to be able to get those answers for the taxpayers in our community, the students deserve the, the answers as well as the teachers do. It's just not asking for any additional funding, it's just for clarification purposes, that we were left here under one interpretation, we read in a local press release, another interpretation, I'd like to just get the clarification on, on where we stand with the matter. We owe it to the taxpayers of the city to understand school finances, as well as we understand all other departments. They're only a department under the city, although they are governing themselves, they're still a department within the city. We owe it to the taxpayers to be able to understand fully what is going on in the school department.
Under Edu, under the Education Reform Act, the school department is not, is answerable to the school committee. Now, I'm not going to get into the, the politics of that, I'm saying is that they're not, they're not answerable to us, when they come up asking for money, that's one thing, we can ask our questions, but as far as how they're going to create, how they're going to address a deficit, that's on the school depart, the school committee to address that to the school department, not on the City Council.
Call for the motions, Chairman.
Now, there's two, right now, there's two motions on the floor, one is for committee, which supersedes the, the motion to refer back to sponsor. Do I have a second on the committee motion?
I'll, I'll second it, I just, I just think it's, it's not going to hurt to talk to them one more time, when jobs are in jeopardy.
There's a motion right now to refer this to committee, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, chairs in doubt, I'd like to see a show of hands, all in.
Roll call vote.
Fine.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
No.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
No.
Counselor Matusky.
No.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
No.
And President Napolitano.
No.
That would be six nays, four yeses, the order has, the motion has failed.
We have a motion to refer back to sponsor in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will take item number twenty-one.
Item number twenty-one, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counselor Michael J. McLaughlin, to invite mayor, the mayor, and Eric Demus to the next Ways and Means Committee meeting, to explain the steps proposed for the school department going forward.
Maybe my colleagues feel as though we shouldn't have answers on this either, but the mayor can't come up here and make statements and not give us a plan of how he's going to execute those plans. I respectfully would request this goes to committee, so that we can have this discussion as well. If my colleagues choose to shield, that's okay with me, but we should go to committee with this.
Counselor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President, I think that there's some merit to this particular piece, the mayor, when we, when we talked about the five million dollars, one of the things that was put in place was, in addition to the task force, there's supposed to be some joint collaborative body, some members from the council, members from the school committee, individuals from the mayor's office, et cetera, I haven't heard anything about it. I don't know who's supposed to appoint those people, I have no idea about that, so I think that that's probably a good thing that we could put in committee and find out where we are and where that's going.
Absolutely, and I, I will give you an update on where, where that is at this time. The ordinance, the ordinance providing a, a joint finance committee was passed by the Board of Alderman, the common council, in the last bicameral session. Nothing happened after that for four years. The intent at the time seemed to be that, the concerns were that city councils needed to be, take the same finance courses that the school committee would take, to be able to understand the, the funding. Now, for whatever reason, it never happened, now this is coming out. We have two conflicts, we have an ordinance that spells out how many members participate, who, and it calls for four city councilors, but we also have an administrative code, which we passed a little over two years ago, which also addresses the same committee and calls for two members, so there is a discrepancy here. The administrative code supersedes the ordinance. Problem is that two members of the city council on a, on a committee like that, in my opinion, is not enough, and, and the council and Board of Alderman, six years ago, felt that same way when they, when they felt that it should be four members. Now, as far as the pointees go, again, the administration right now is reviewing the administrative code to make amendments, they'll make the amendments and come before us to make the changes to administrative code, at that point, we'll retire the ordinance. There have been four members who have, who have spoken to me, that we've identified who will, who would be well-suited for this committee, but right now, we don't know whether we need two, three, four, okay? And again, when the administration brings the administrative code back before us, in that, in that request, will determine who, whether the administration's plan is to select city councilors, which I personally disagree with, or whether it's on me, or any sitting, seating council president to appoint those members. And I think that because of the separation between the two branches, it's appropriate that we make the recommendations who represents us on that committee, but we're not there yet. Right now, they're addressing the fact that there's a discrepancy, and as long as a discrepancy exists between administrative code and the ordinance, we can't proceed. So the administration is working on that, and once they've made the recommendation and brings it before us, it'll go to committee, we'll discuss this and, and clarify it. Mr. President, have they given you any kind of a timeframe with that? No, all I'm aware of is the discrepancy, I'm right now trying to arrange a meeting with the mayor this Wednesday, so we can discuss that, the, my proposal for, for a delegation to go before the State House, and several other things, the, the executive session regarding the power plant, there's several items that have come out of this, this body that we've presented to the mayor's office. that, the, my proposal for, for a delegation to go before the State House and several other things, the, the executive session regarding the power plant. There's several items that have come out of this, this body that we've presented to the mayor's office that we're waiting for a response on. That's one of those items.
Okay.
So, I hope to have an answer for you at our next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Hamlin.
I'm reading this, and I don't understand the reading. It says to invite the mayor and Mr. Demas to the Ways and Committees meeting to explain the steps proposed for the school department. Does that mean that the mayor and Mr. Demas are going to tell the school department what steps they have to do? Or is this ordinance written so it should say, instead of proposed for, it should say proposed by? That's, I, I don't understand who, is it the mayor and Mr. Demas that are going to give their proposal? Or is it they're going to explain the proposal that the school department has? Read it, read it, and you'll see it.
Councilor McLaughlin, if you could answer, one, one second. Councilor McLaughlin, if you can answer the question.
The, the intent on this was the mayor came up and talked about the operational audit. He talked about that committee that he put together of individuals and talked about the committee that you just spoke of, Mr. President. I'd like him to lay out for, however he wants to do it, the steps that are going to be taken for the, for the school department. The operational audit, that separate independent committee, and then the committee that you just spoke about where there's some clarification that needs to happen, something my colleagues informed me about previously. Those are the steps that I'd like to hear about. I'd like him to lay those out and give us timelines of when those are going to start and hopefully be finished.
Okay, very good. Councilor Matuski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did have discussion, I know he's not here this evening, with the chairman of Ways and Means, actually yesterday, Councilor McKinnon. He feels that it's too soon to actually, we just had a meeting two weeks ago, and we talked about the school department for quite some time. Now, you just, this just came out in one of the papers here, schools will not seek more money from the city. As the councilman stated, we have a, a operational audit company here right now. It's too soon. If you want to put this in committee, say, two months from now, you've got to give these departments, Mr. Demas and, and the mayor, and the superintendent, and the school committee some time to actually, you know, you can't just, we just had a meeting that was very lengthy and very eye-opening to a lot of people. We want to give them a chance to come up with the proposals and, and, you know, you just can't do it two, three weeks after a meeting like that. You know, so my recommendation is either the sponsor waits till the end of May, and then we have a committee meeting. That'd be something that we can get some information from. It's too soon right now. If he doesn't do that, I'm going to vote no on it tonight. Thank you.
Councilor McLaughlin.
My intention to Councilor Matuski was for them to be able to lay out how we start, how we get off the ground. There's going to be a funding source that's going to have to be identified to be able to do this operational audit. They're going to have to explain to us how they're going to pay for the audit, the timeline, what they're looking for in the audit, the timeline they hope to complete the audit. Those are steps that need to be discussed with the city council. You can't just take the idea and actually create it. There is steps that need to go into place before it can even begin, never mind finish. I'd like to hear the steps that are in place and where they're, where they're starting from, not where they're finishing. That's my intention on this.
I have...
Okay, that's fine.
All right, we have a motion to send this to Ways and Means. Is this the only motion on the floor?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. President.
What's the timeframe on this? Oh, is this going to just go next two weeks?
The next Ways and Means meeting.
It's going to the committee.
Okay, so it'll go to Ways and Means, then it'll come back out to us? Okay, that's all.
Clerk will read item number twenty-two.
Mr. President, item number twenty-two is a resolution offered by Councilor Michael McLaughlin and Richard Delasola to invite Senator Saldi de Manico to the March twelfth meeting to discuss earmarks that the senator has got approval on for the city of Everett.
Councilor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was informed previously at that meeting two weeks ago that the senator had got an additional $1 million for Chapter Seventy funded. I know the senator has got monies for other appropriations throughout the year just from having conversations with him, as we all do. We, we know there's different paths that he is able to help fund in sources in the city. I'd like him to just come up and give a breakdown of those individual line items or where the monies that he's received have gone into what accounts and what, for what purposes. I would invite any of my colleagues that so choose to be on this item to, to do so, but I think it's just for informational purposes, we can understand what the senator is bringing home to the city of Everett throughout the budget and throughout the season, uh, year, legislative year. Thank you.
What's your motion?
Do you have a motion?
Have the motion, Mike. Just bring it up. Make a motion.
I was only doing it on the council meeting so that everybody would have an opportunity to ask him a question if they so choose on a specific earmark that may be coming or has come to the city. That's why I didn't want to go to committee with this, but I would make a motion that we favorable action and we refer this to the next city council meeting of March twelfth.
Second.
Would you like to invite somebody?
It's already in the piece, the senator, right?
Yeah. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Clerk will read the last item on the agenda.
Item number twenty-three, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilor Michael McLaughlin and Councilor Michael Marquezzi to request Jay Monte of Planning and Development to appear at the March twelfth city council meeting to discuss the traffic patterns at the intersection of Beecham and Broadway.
Councilor Marquezzi.
Yes, we, myself and our councilor, McLaughlin, we went to the meeting, the traffic and planning, traffic and planning, traffic, and we have some suggestions. And I guess they really want us to talk to Jay Monte, because he controls actually the lights, the timing of the lights down there. So, that, you know, there's things that could be put in place to increase the traffic down there. You know, we discussed maybe not allowing a left-on Beecham Street between two hours a day so you get continuous two-lane flow down there, put some signage and redirect, you know, cars or trucks, maybe they can bypass the area and get on the Second Street, because if you go sixteen east, there's no traffic. You can get on the Second Street and probably get to where you want just as quick. So, that, that's the reason for this, and, you know, we'll have some questions for him, and if anybody has some questions for him, I think it's a good time to ask him for. So, just like to make a motion, have Mr. Monte come before us next meeting.
Second motion. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, before we adjourn, I would like to reconsider item number twenty-two and send it to a committee as a whole. We're referring everything to the March twelfth meeting, and there's other pieces that are going to be added on, so I, I would recommend that we reconsider it and have just a special meeting just on that. So, my motion is to reconsider item number twenty-two.
Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion to reconsider...
Reconsider item number...
Reconsider item number twenty-two, seconded by Councilor Hamlin. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Now, the proper motion would be to refer item twenty-two to the committee as a whole.
Is there a second? Okay, we have a motion for item number twenty-two to refer to a committee of the whole.
Chairman, on that, I'm sorry.
Councilor Hamlin.
I'm kind of against sending things to the committee in the whole, but I will go okay with this provided we get a report back from the committee of the whole with some information on it, because too many times we refer things to the committee of the whole, and they come back and they say we made no decision. Well, that puts us in the same place where we started from. So, we have to have, anytime we refer something to the committee of the whole, we must get a report from the committee.
Okay. You mind the committee of the whole is the entire city council? Councilman?
On the piece, I would just request when we're looking for a date or time to do this, perhaps we could do this committee of the whole. I, I don't see this being more than half an hour. Perhaps we could do it right before our council meeting. That way, we don't have to come up here multiple times, come up to the same night, knock everything out. So, that's a suggestion.
Are we going to invite the senator? Excuse me for speaking out of turn.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion to send this to committee of the whole verbally at the beginning, before one of our meetings, probably the twelfth. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Just a quick reminder, Legislative Affairs is meeting on the first at 6:00 P. M., Government Operations on the fifth at 6:00 P. M., and Ways and Means on the fifteenth. Councilor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. If, if I may, I just want to reiterate on that, a point of personal privilege with regard to Legislative Affairs. I've requested of the members, if they have anything they want to incorporate into the duties and responsibilities, that I'd love to hear from them. As some of the colleagues have mentioned today, this is a crucial position. It needs to be handled with the utmost professionalism, and it's a position that affects us all tremendously. So, we need to make sure we put the right person in there. So, we're working on responsibilities, duties, et cetera, but I would love to hear from any of the members if there's any particular things that they want to put into responsibilities and duties. We are meeting on Thursday, and then hopefully we'll put something together to refer to the body, and then we can get the advertisement going and start interviewing some candidates. But if anyone has any suggestions, either to any of the members directly or to our clerk, let's make sure we get it for our committee meeting on Thursday so we can incorporate that. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. We are adjourned.